Yep.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. This is our April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one council work session. Jamie, if you could please read the sunshine statement.
The advice that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the sunshine law in the following manner. Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jenny?
Here.
Ms. Pareo?
Here.
Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Burrell?
Here. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, we're going to move a little bit off of this agenda. We're not going to have the consent agenda. We're going to actually table resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seventy-two. That's authorizing CME associates to perform engineering services. I spoke to Jim earlier this morning, and he wasn't satisfied with some of the work that came in. He's going to tune some things up. And so he wants to just hold off for another couple of meetings so we can address that. So with that being said, I'll ask for a motion to table resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seventy-two.
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. That resolution is tabled. And now at this time, I will accept a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seventy-one. That's the authorization for the enforcement guidance on title seven.
I'm a.
Second.
Jamie, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Jenny? Ms. Pareo? Mr. Lyon? Mr. Burrell?
Aye, and motion carries, and the resolution is passed. Next up, we have our motions, and we're seeking a motion to accept the report of the CFO, including the March year-to-date revenue report, year-to-date budget report, and the March check register.
Motion.
I'll second.
Second. Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny? Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye, and the motion carries. Now to our work session portion of our agenda. Got a thick agenda. So first up, we have our communications report. Let's get to the right page. So this is the report that was prepared by our communications committee. I drafted the report, but it was the work of many of all the people in the committee, as you could see on page one of the report. The report, I think, in my mind speaks for itself, but just the summary of it, you know, council is well aware of the objectives, what we were trying to accomplish, and that's ways to improve communication with the residents here in Delran. With that sort of mission or call to action, we've met, I think it was three or four times to address that. First time we met, we really kind of put all the Lego pieces on the table, as we call it, went through all the problems, the weaknesses, the strengths that we have. And the next couple of meetings were ways we can improve what we were doing based on the problems we had in front of us. As you can see, there's those four main recommendations, which I don't want to, I'm not going to go through this and read it all to you because I'm sure you've read it. But the main recommendations are recommendation two, I think, has the most weight. And that's just the different mediums that we propose using. As you can see, there's a newsletter once a year, text message and email, the bulk of the communication, modernized, bring our, bring our communication strategy into the twenty-first century, as well as improving our social media. We have a great website and a fairly followed Facebook page, but we also need to get on the other platforms to continue reaching the residents here in Delran. So, but I think also most important or very important is the multiple languages portion of this, right? The school district, I think, has been running this program very well. They have, they sent me a couple of letters. They use, they send out letters in English, Portuguese and Turkish. It's a great way for them to reach out to that community that's growing here in town. So I think that's got to be a key portion of whatever the administration does moving forward. So, you know, with that, I'm happy to hear anybody's thoughts. And, you know, we did budget for, we sort of budget preemptively for this report. We didn't know exactly what would happen, but, you know, the mayor put in a decent chunk of money, you know, sort of preemptively that to be prepared for this. And ultimately, the mayor, mayor, I'm going to jump to you after council chats a little bit. You know, what your thoughts are on this. I mean, you were in some of these meetings, but ultimately, you're going to be the man running the show, getting this out. So Buck eventually gets passed to you. But councils, does anyone have any thoughts on this report we can chat about?
I thought it was very comprehensive. I thought it covered all the areas that I would be worried about. I was glad to see that you're really not going to consider a newsletter on a regular basis unless it's a person who requested. My experience with newsletters in the school board was not good. You know, we'd send it out quarterly, and you'd ask people, friends, what they thought, and they had no clue. They never even saw it. So, yeah, I like the electronic media is definitely the way to go. But good job, really nice job by the committee.
Yeah, thanks, Lynn. I know, I know. I'm glad you said that here for the other members of council. We did discuss that and what you told me about how you did do the quarterly newsletter and found it wasn't really effective at all. And I think portions of this discussed about really working, you know, for this to work appropriately, we really need to work with the HOAs and the senior communities to make sure there's buy-in, right? Because that's sort of a common theme throughout. If there's not buy-in in whatever we do, it's not going to be worth, worth anybody's time, right? So, you know, once this is even implemented, this is the major first step in my mind. Then the administration is going to implement a program. But step three really is about getting people to buy into the program and use, use this information. Any other thoughts, Mayor?
Sure.
We, this is going to.
You know, ultimately, it lands here.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think the most important part of this is that most of the communication that we talked about that was digital is, is free or cheap. You know, the expensive part is paper and mailing. And, and the, I think that was a great idea that the committee came up with to, you know, say, if you want it, we'll do it, but you have to opt in. You know, maybe we'll do one with the tax bills that has very clearly how they can call in or, or email in or send a letter in for those folks that want to do that. And, and then we'll have a small subset of the entire group of Delran residents that will get a mailed piece. So that'll probably be annually, maybe quarterly. Certainly won't be appropriate for, you know, snowstorm emergency alerts, but you never could do that. We do have the phone option for that as well. Again, much cheaper than putting ink to paper and mailing it on a regular basis. So it was a great, it was a great compromise on how to get the word out to those folks that wanted it in print, but also to save it from becoming too expensive. And as Lynn said, you know, I can't tell you how many newsletters that I've opened, they go on, oh, and thrown it away because I didn't ask for it. So the committee was great. It was, it was, it was a diverse group, especially from demographics. I mean, the age groups were there. The folks were participating. It was a very, very impressive group, and they came up with some great ideas, stuff that, that frankly, I hadn't thought of. Or if I had, it's been a long time since I thought of them. So kudos, Tyler, for putting it together and bringing that squarely now on my lap. So thank you very much.
Anytime we can pass the buck off of this council's pocket.
Thank you.
More than happy to do it, Mayor.
I'm, I'm happy to be there for you.
I mean, this is, and, and to piggyback off of the mayor's comments, this group is, was a great group, very thoughtful. We worked well together, and they're honestly itching to do some more work. So you can see there's some additional recommendations they had about a welcome packet to the town. And I think maybe in, you know, once we get this all complete, maybe we get that group back together. And, you know, maybe they can work to prepare a welcome package for, for new folks coming in the town.
Yeah.
So they're itching to get involved, which is great. And, you know, that's, let's definitely keep them in the loop and keep them involved, right? I mean, this is, this is how local government should work.
Yeah, agree.
Any other thoughts from council?
I just, I was on the committee, and I'll echo that it was very, very fun to be on that committee, hearing what everybody had to say and, and how we kind of bantered about to get to where we were on that. And we, like I said in the beginning, how do you reach the people that don't want to be reached until then? They need to be reached. So we're trying to come up with creative ways that people can reach, get the information that they need when they need it, and don't have to scratch their head and say, where am I going to find this? So I think a lot of that was achieved, and we'll see how it shakes out, and if we have to tweak it, we'll tweak it.
Good.
And, yeah, I would just add that, you know, I think that's, you know, especially in this remote environment we're all working in, you know, figuring out which ways are best to communicate to different groups, different age ranges, you know, types of mediums that they like to receive, whether it be, you know, something in print, something digital. I think it's, you know, definitely a worthwhile effort, and I think that it's going to definitely, you know, pay dividends as we go forward in the future. So, you know, kudos to all the team. And thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council Vice President as well. Mr. Lyon is being on the group and being on the team, just making sure we, we're here, you know, we understand what our residents are looking for and how they want to be communicated to. So excellent job.
No problem, no problem. We're looking forward to it. I think this, this is in a group effort, and this is going to benefit the whole town. Virginia, sorry about that.
Yeah, and if I can add, as an immigrant, I love the fact that you're incorporating the different languages to get the information out to the people that can't understand English.
Yeah, and that's, that's a growing population. I mean, back when I was in high school, we did have a large Turkish and Portuguese population, but I think it's ballooned in the last couple of years, and the school has adapted to it. And I think we should adapt as well here from the township, right? I mean, if there's, the theme is if people aren't aware of what's going on, and there's, why are we doing what we're doing? You know what I'm saying? People have to be aware of what's going on. So I think this is the first step forward. So I think, Mayor, we, we all concur, I think, with most of the recommendations. Don't want to put words in council's, council's mouth. I know, I think you do as well. You were in the meeting with us steering the ship as well. So if there's anything we can do to help facilitate this from our end, you know, to make sure this happens, we'd be more than happy to help.
Right. Well, we'll see, you know, one of the things, remembering one of the meetings, that, you know, this is somewhat of a trial balloon. You know, as we, as we take their recommendations and run with them, we deliver them, and if we find that it's not working the way we had hoped, or something else comes up, or somebody has an idea of a better way to do something, then we'll adjust and we'll, we'll check it as we go forward. Keep, keep, keep an eye on its effectiveness, and then the things that are effective, we keep those that aren't, we discard and try something else. So it's, it's an ongoing process, but boy, did we get a nice jump start with all the folks who were candid and engaging. And unfortunately, none of the Zoom was recorded because one of the members of the committee was a young fella who was, was not harmed in the course of the committee meeting, actually fell out of his chair. And I only caught the end of it, but those that saw the entire process as, as he fell over, found it to be quite amusing.
That was, that was good. If only it was recorded. And, you know, for those folks, you know, watching this with us and participating or watching this in the future, you know, there's, this is, as the mayor put, a huge step forward, but there's a lot of work on the backend that needs to happen. I think we even talked, the mayor and I spoke about even doing like a month trial basis with maybe a hundred residents or something, just to work out the kinks before we, we pop this open. Because once it, once the plan is, you know, live, you know, you only have one opportunity to get people captive and get them opted in. If six months down the road, we have to wave the white flag and say, hey, we did something wrong, right? It's going to just erode the trust in the process. So, you know, this isn't going to happen overnight, you know, not in the next, next month. You know, it's going to take some time to make sure this is done right. So just want to level set expectations, but we're moving down the right path for sure.
Indeed.
All right, great. Thanks, guys. If there's no questions with that, we'll head to our next item. A lot of paper here tonight. Next, we have our sewer claims. So luckily, we have a nice report here that the administration does for us. So first sewer count, they're recommending charging the average two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty bill, which is eight gallons. Does anyone have any objections to that? You just shake your head or nod, because we'll, we'll do it all in one motion. Okay, I don't either. And then next is number two, is recommending charging the average for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, which was eight for this sewer account, or seven, I'm sorry. Any objections with that? I don't have any. Okay, great. Jamie, you just put that on the next agenda.
Yes, there'll be a resolution on the next agenda.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Next up, we have our open space tax. Put this on the agenda. Just, and Sal, I'm going to rely on you for this. I know council discussed earlier in the year about the open space, I believe. I believe everybody indicated that we were of the assumption that we would discuss moving forward with it. So I just wanted to, to talk, if you could explain the council, what, what we're sort of looking at in terms of timeline? What would we have to do if we wanted to get extending the open space tax onto the referendum in November?
Sure. So as I understand from Jeff, that this was done by voter referendum a number of years ago, and it's set to expire, I believe, at the end of this year. So in order, if council does nothing, then it will expire, and you'll no longer be able, I'm sorry.
Point, point of clarity, I think it expires in two thousand twenty-five.
Oh, we have, we have some time?
Yeah, we do have some time. Yeah.
Okay. So, so, so if you do nothing, then, then it will go until two thousand twenty-five, at which point then it will run out. But if you choose to move forward with it and, and extend it beyond that time, then we would do it again by voter referendum. So what we would look to see is the last referendum that was passed by on the ballot, get the date of that. And then in order for it to be on the November ballot, we have to work backwards. And Jennifer and I were talking about this earlier today. So there's a number of days prior to the general election where it has to, the question has to be submitted to the superintendent. It's got to go to the county board of elections. They have to review of the language and, and okay it. So it's roughly a sixty-day, sixty to ninety-day process prior to the November election, which means we should probably get started now, be able to submit. I like to submit things early, so we can submit it sometime in May or early June, have it reviewed, have it approved. This way it'll be on the ballot, and it'll be on the ballot in November. That's the process from a macro level.
Okay, gotcha. And I believe we mentioned it, but we can discuss again, council, you know, the value, I believe it expires in twenty-four, twenty-five, right? So we do have some time. But the problem is that all of that money that has been collected or that we anticipate collecting has been bonded against, or we borrowed against that to pay for everything. So right now, if we wanted to, to, to go out and purchase some open space, we could do that, but we couldn't bond against, we'd be bonding in a different capacity than against the open space tax, just because there's no money left to anticipate. So if we pass this, if the voters pass this in November, we then have twenty-five years or whatever we set, right, that we can then borrow against, because the banks anticipate that revenue coming in, right? So that gives us flexibility to do what we need to do in the time during our term here and for the future. And I think there's no, me personally, I think there's no better time to do this with all the construction that we see out, you know, in Chester Ave, where they took down a bunch of trees and, and things of that nature. You know, people, the residents are going to be able to see that, hey, we're reacting to that. We're trying to be as proactive as possible, but in order to do that, we need the capital, you know, to go out there and, and take care of our open space and purchase open space.
Tyler, if I could just add, so there's two things that are, that were absolutely accurate, and, and I feel very important that everybody should know. First of which, Jeff has done a great job in leveraging that money so that not only did we have the money that was on hand, but what we anticipated coming in. And we have, in essence, you know, Community Park on the grants was a product of that and some other open space properties that were involved. And frankly, you know, we're running out of open space in pretty quick way. So if we're going to preserve this space, it's probably best that we start ASAP. And, and we don't need to worry about collecting all the money yet because we can, we can leverage the anticipated tax coming in. And it's very important for all the residents to know that this is not an increase in taxes. It's something that is already collected, and it will sunset and therefore will stop collecting it. And the few, you know, the few dollars that you don't, that you see, you won't even see come out of your tax bill, but it will severely handicap the folks that are trying to preserve the open space. It kind of ties your hands because you don't have the available capital. So it's just very important to know that that money, you know, once the open space is gone in ten years, to say, well, let's have an open space fund, and we can pull that all in. It won't matter because there'll be nothing left to preserve. So I think that's, I think the most important issue is the timeliness of, of what, what's being proposed. And I think it's important to do that just because, as you mentioned, you know, we're, we're running out of open space. And those folks that, that would want to do that would, would be more than happy to come in and gobble that up. So that's all. I just wanted to make sure that those comments were made.
Thanks, Mayor. Does anyone have any thoughts? I mean, I'm pretty sure we, we discussed it earlier, but I wanted to put it back on and make sure, you know, people still have the same sentiments about, about moving forward with this. I mean, we, we obviously have to review the language, but any, any pulse on council with, with moving forward with this?
I think it's a great idea. I think we should move forward. The, the nice part is it's, it's not an increase. It's just going to continue what we're doing. And it, we need, really need to hang on or try to hang on to what we can in a logical, rational way to hold on to open spaces and preserve that going forward. So I, I think it's something we should pursue, get it on, and let the voters decide in November. Hopefully, in time for this November, that we can maintain this for however many years we're going to do it.
Agreed.
I, I would agree with that. And I think, what was the, like, twenty-four dollars per average household is what?
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up now, actually. Jeff sent me an email about it. Yeah, it's, it's pretty, it's very small sliver of the total bill.
Gary, or Mr. Mayor, the, the way you were referencing, so are you saying you want to move ahead before, say, the six-month period before it expires?
So, you know, I, I believe it expires two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. The, the issue is this, at this point, all the money that's anticipated from the old referendum is committed to debt service or things that, that have already been preserved. You know, debt service to the things that have already been preserved. So if, if we were to wait to, until, and I don't know what the legalities are, are with this, but if we were to wait until that referendum expires and then kind of couple it to the end of that, at that point, it would still be good. But in the meantime, if a property becomes available and we don't have the anticipated tax assured that it's coming in, then we can't, we can't bond that way. We have to do it a different way. So we would be, it would be like buying the extended warranty, even though it's probably not a great example. But if, you know, the, the, our, our end of the anticipated tax revenue will sunset in two thousand twenty-four.
I got the intention, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that it just would, it would extend it now so that if we, you know, we came upon a property that we absolutely wanted to do, and we knew that we had the funds in anticipated revenue, then we could move quickly. Sometimes if you don't move quickly, you lose the opportunity.
Yeah, and, and Lynn, I did pull up here, so the average, if the average, the Sess House in Delran is two hundred and twelve thousand, right? The rate would be forty-six dollars for that home. So the, the rate is point zero two two. So we're talking forty-six dollars on the average home. And we would just extend that for another twenty-five years, like, like the current, like the, the prior one was approved for.
If not, we would have to wait until they start making more land.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the benefit is, you know, we, we can do this in three years, right? That's, that's not a problem, but we want the ability to borrow now against that, right? So if something comes up, we can do that. We also with this, even if we can't, if we can't, if there's no land in the future, but we still have taxes coming in from this, we can use this to improve the current open space we have, right? We can build additional things at, at open space we have. So this isn't really a lost cause. We can really do a lot with this to improve the town.
Yeah, with that, I'm, I'm supportive as well as moving forward. You know, open space is definitely something that, you know, I'm, I'm interested in. And, you know, I know a lot of my, the folks in my ward also are interested in. So definitely want to make sure that we're pushing forward with this.
All right, so we'll, we'll get started. We'll follow up with Jeff, get a, get a copy of the old one and then start doing the process moving forward.
Yep, thanks, thanks. I just wanted to make sure we, we don't come too close to that deadline.
Yep, agreed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So we'll see a draft of that in the near future. So we got a couple of months. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Next up, we have the hockey scoreboard, and I may ask the mayor for his thoughts on this. But I believe he, he was in discussion with this gentleman. So there's, based on my understanding, there's a local businessman in town who's very involved in the Delran Athletic Association. And he would like to essentially sponsor a scoreboard, which means he's pretty much paying for a brand-new school board, a scoreboard at the existing hockey rink. This is a great way, community and residents can get involved to help improve the, the existing infrastructure without frankly, taxpayers being involved, you know, without coming from our, our revenues, which I think is a great thing. So we can use that money for other things that we need to do. And, you know, this, this is not a practice that hasn't happened before. It's not, it's, we've used this model at Community Park. Patty Colodey, when she was a councilwoman, and Bob Kennedy raised a large amount of money for scoreboards and naming field rights at Community Park, which helped buy everything from additional parks to batting cages and things of that nature. So this, this is definitely something that we've done a lot here in Delran, and I think it's a good way to improve the parks. So Mayor, I know, did, did you reach, did this gentleman reach out to you about this?
I, you know, actually, the hockey folks and the AA folks reached out to me about him. I had several conversations with him, and it was really just a matter of making it happen and reference the, the other way. And it, it appears as if what we did in the past was that we, that the person paid for the scoreboard and that they had that name, they, they could put an ad for their business on the scoreboard until frankly, the scoreboard needed to be replaced. And then someone else would step up, could be the same person, and pay for the new scoreboard. That it wasn't really, it was, it was either five or ten years, but it's really going to depend on the scoreboard itself. So, you know, it, it was back and forth as to, oh, you know, how are we going to do it? But I think that most importantly, you know, it, it's, it's, it's a free scoreboard. This, this gentleman is, you know, is willing to pay for it, wants to pay for it. The hockey, hockey folks want him to buy the scoreboard and, and give that just a little bit of a, of a boost by way of the kids' experience. And it just makes sense because we've, we've set the precedent, precedent and done that in the past. So I, I, I was all for it. I think he would be ready and willing to write a check in order to do that. So it just needs council's okay before we can move forward.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I, I have no issue with it. It's a, it's a free school board, scoreboard. So any, any thoughts from council?
I'm, I'm fine with it as, as long as it still has that horn and siren when they score a goal, because I live very close to, so I can hear that go off, and I can go score!
They said they would add that for you, Tom.
Yeah, we, we can make that happen.
It's, it's obviously a great thing. The only question I have, is there going to be any other business? People are going to step up and say, whoa, wait a minute, why didn't I have an opportunity? Yeah, we're kind of giving it to somebody without any other opportunities for anybody else in town.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good question. Yeah, I mean, that's, that, that's a good question. Um, you know, normally, you know, I, it's, it's a good question, but I, I think it's something that if the AA is confident, you know, that they have folks reach out to them. They have a big business network, right? And, you know, I, I think they're pretty confident in this person and this is the person who will be able to do it, right? I think if, um, if they had any concerns, they wouldn't recommend it to us. So I, I'm, I'm not too concerned about it. Um, Mayor, did you?
Yeah, you know, frankly, there are other opportunities out there. If you've, you know, if you've watched the Flyers, the boards can be painted. Um, you know, there, there can be signage within, you know, all around the, the boards. If that were necessary, somebody wanted to, to donate, um, you know, some additional fencing or protective glass or whatever. Um, and there's other opportunities that certainly can be, um, uh, done in community park. So I don't think this is the only opportunity. It's certainly this one. But frankly, uh, this gentleman stepped up and said, I'd be willing to do it. Uh, I don't think that, you know, I don't know that there's any, um, and this is a donation. They're willing to make a donation. Do we want to accept the donation? I don't know. It's, it's not like we're putting out for bids, uh, for this. Could we make more money? Possibly. Uh, but the intention was never really to, to make money on these scoreboards, but to, just to have them, uh, provided at no cost to the township. Sal, is there any, I don't mean to overstep council president, but any legal issues with that?
I think we're fine. We're fine.
Sounds good.
You get a new squad, you don't pay for it? How can you say no to that? Right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I think the mayor framing it as a donation is a good, it's a good way to put it, right? I mean, that's, that's what it is.
Yep, that's what it is.
Yep. So I think council's good. Do we need, Jamie, does he just want? Just us, do we need a motion for this? What, what do you think Jeff would prefer?
No, I don't think we need a motion.
Okay. Great. Just that we don't have issues.
Just an okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. All of council has no problems and whoever the gentleman is, thank, we thank him and his business for stepping up and helping to improve the community. Uh, it definitely goes a long way. Uh, great. And next up, we have our 300 page report from the Delaware River Court of Planning endorsement. A great read on a Saturday. I, based on talking with Jamie and Jim, there's, and Jeff, there's actually nothing for us to do right now with, with the report. Uh, it was more of just Jeff wanted to get it in front of us uh, ahead of anything we need to do. My understanding is in the future, we do have to pass a resolution saying we adopt it or we at least, um, endorse this report. And second, we need to put together an advisory committee to help, um, you know, advise if, if they need it. There, there is, before I open it to, to council, there is a couple of things that I guess Jim or Jeff or the mayor, whoever would go, go back and talk to them about this. I mean, there's a couple of things. The report seems dated. It, it talks about a master plan from 2009. I, we do have a new master plan, I think from 2020. Um, it also talks about, uh, Delran Sewer Authority. We haven't had a sewer authority, at least in my time here. Um, so that's pretty dated. Um, and then there's some redevelopment zones it mentions in town. I'm not sure if they're even still redevelopment zones. They're just, I, I, I don't know if this, how early of a draft this is, you know, if this was copied and pasted from a previous edition. They want us to point these things out, uh, but that's just some of the stuff I noticed. And Jim, you, you, you put a call out to the county to kind of figure out what they wanted from us, right? You haven't heard back from them yet.
Yeah, it, it was later in, in the day today. So I, I wasn't expecting the calls, hoping to get lucky. But I'm, I'm sure they'll get ahold of me, uh, real quickly. That, that department they have over there is very helpful with, with, with all the towns around the county. And it seems like they're taking a big step for the township and putting together this report for the township. Usually it's like referred to the different township planners, which would be, would cost a pretty penny. So, uh, I'll wait to hear back from them and then I'll get a clear understanding of what the procedure will be to move forward and how to adopt this and how to get our comments to them and what, what the timeline is. And then I can report back, I guess, probably by the next work session. Uh, and then I'll work with Jeff and Jamie and the mayor to, uh, make sure we have that, you know, spelled out what we want to do.
Okay, great. So is any other thoughts from council that we, we don't, we don't need to do anything? It was just for information purposes right now? Everybody good? Okay. Great. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. All right. So at this time, we will have our reports. So starting off, we have our clerk, Jamie Eggers. Jamie?
No, no, no report tonight.
Thanks, Jamie. Appreciate it. And Jeff is not with us tonight. Uh, so we have our report from Mayor Katrin Bowe. Mayor?
Yes, as, uh, it will be my usual brief report. I'm just kidding. Hey, I'm, I'm really excited that, uh, yesterday marked the first 100 days for Councilman Jenny and for myself and, uh, uh, Council President Burrell in our new roles, uh, here uh, at 100 days. So together with the rest of council, I'm really proud of, of what we've accomplished so far for the residents. And, you know, we're just getting started. So typically I often say that government moves at a glacial pace. But when everybody, as they are right now, works together toward the same positive goals, you know, we get more immediate re- results and more reaction much quicker. So I'd just like to take a few minutes, uh, to talk about some of the things we did and what, what I envision, you know, going forward is the next couple of things. So, uh, many of you know, and the residents have certainly seen some of the changes we've been making on the website. We've been, uh, going meticulous through, meticulously through section by section with a fine tooth comb, removing outdated information and making the correct information that's on the web easier to find. So our first major piece was the overhaul of the Public Works, uh, section. And then the launch of the Recycle Coach, who we, we, you know, we met again with today to even do a deeper dive on how we can update that more quickly by doing it ourselves. Now, uh, waste and recycling information is easier to understand. And it shows each resident an accurate pickup calendar. It's easy to do. Uh, it's based on your unique address. So, uh, you can search for nearly anything uh, that you want to dispose of and it'll have an answer, uh, that is, uh, programmed into the system. And it's available on the website as well as on a smartphone. Uh, if you'd like to download the app. Uh, if you've done that already and you're an old, uh, old steady user of Recycle Coach, I would suggest put your, put your address in one more time and that will automatically pull up all the new information. And you can even, you know, show your, show a, uh, my calendar and it shows you everything from garbage collection dates to recycling dates. It's available, it's available now. And I think I said it enough times in prior meetings, it's at no cost to the township or the residents. As you know, it's important to me and to council, uh, that everyone in our community, uh, get the right answer for their questions. And they don't have to go through, uh, all the social media, uh, uh, sections out there. So what, you know, council and mayor are trying to be, uh, more transparent and informative. And, uh, as was discussed earlier, uh, Council President Burrell mentioned the Communications Committee. It was, it was genuinely successful and we learned more about how to make sure that all of our residents have access to the information. Uh, and most importantly, that, that it, it works the way that is best for them. Uh, we learned a lot. I certainly learned a lot about, uh, the different perspectives from the various groups. And, uh, we've already started to implement some of the suggestions and I'm glad to see the council, uh, approved the plan and that we can move forward. The other thing, it's a little bit dated now because the weather's so nice, but we had several snowstorms during the past winter. And in addition to getting, uh, my firsthand look from, uh, the plow driver's perspective, I didn't plow at all. Uh, but it was certainly a, a great ride along. And I was able to see that, uh, some of the snow and other ordinances, uh, needed attention. That you, uh, you all on council have, uh, already been, uh, working hard to update the snow ordinance and parking ordinances and some other township ordinances that were dated or no longer serve the community's best interest. And I applaud you for that. Uh, you know, the, the, the other thing that's important as we, as we look back, uh, the first responders who are always here, always do a great job. Um, and, you know, never more notable than, than when our chief of police retires and, uh, the crew moves forward, but they always do a great job protecting us. I, along with the councilwoman, Virginia Parejo, who it's a pleasure to see tonight, not just here. And, and Councilman Marlo Smith, uh, went out to watch the firemen and women train in a live burn situation. Uh, if you've never seen that, they actually go into a, a, a building that has a, a live fire uh, to watch them train and coordinate and work as a team is incredible and inspiring. Uh, these folks do what they do for us for free, uh, is amazing. So looking forward, uh, after our first hundred days, uh, you know, council and President Burrell and our engineers and the superintendent of public works and Jeff, our township administrator, the president of the AA and I reviewed some of the current problems with the ball fields. Uh, I spoke today with the soccer club president and some of the issues that are surrounded with their fields. I've had several residents reach out about, uh, some of the conditions. And, and I, I just want the folks to understand that, you know, we know that we have millions of dollars of fields in town. And, uh, uh, it's going to take just a little bit of time for us to develop a real and proactive plan to address these current field situations. Uh, you know, we're doing some Band-Aids right now to get us into the season and through it. But, you know, we're working on and developing a field maintenance procedure, uh, including, uh, you know, addressing the flooding problems and turf, uh, issues, how to resurface that and regroom the artificial field, the buddy ball field. And to dramatically improve that, the long-term experience of anyone, especially our children who are using those fields. Uh, the ball fields being in top condition not only reflects well on the township, but it also benefits a large number of residents who use them each season. We're going to make sure that we do everything we can to keep the fields in the appropriate shape moving forward. As I often say, good enough isn't good enough. Uh, just a few other comments, if I could, uh, we're starting to look at all the parks and the rec areas in the township and their conditions. We've been working this spring, we will be working this spring with the Senator Singleton's office, the Delran Green Team to do some cleanups of parks and recreation areas. Uh, this is an opportunity also for Delran students to get community service hours. And, uh, we'll give families with younger children, uh, more options to get outside, to get some fresh air if they're being cooped up for the past year because of the pandemic. Uh, we'll, we are continuing to increase commercial redevelopment. And as we move forward, we're looking at ways to revitalize the sections of town that need it. And frankly, there's some very exciting things that are already in the works, but are not yet ready to be announced. Uh, I believe that when we begin to see empty and vacant commercial properties being utilized again, residents of Delran will be proud of our town and its future. During the pandemic, uh, I've been fortunate enough, where despite the pandemic, um, I've had an opportunity to meet with, uh, many folks, some over the phone, some Zoom, some face to face. Uh, to talk about the things that are most important to them in our community. And, and frankly, I really enjoy that time and I hope that soon we'll be able to meet in larger groups. But in the meantime, I know, uh, that you'll, if there's anything that anyone needs uh, in our Delran family, I will do everything possible to always be available. Uh, and last but not least, I'd like to thank council and our staff for the work that they do every day. Uh, none of what's happening here would be possible without their consent and hard work. And, and I thank you, uh, for supporting all of those efforts. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Next up, we have our reports from our solicitor, Salvatore Cicliano. Sal?
Uh, thank you. Nothing, nothing broken.
Thank you, Sal. And next up, we have from our engineer, CME Associates, Jim Winkowski. Jim?
Hi, thanks. A couple of items, uh, regarding the, the sewer repair in front of Barlow. Um, they're going to be out there Monday night, overnight to do the replacement liner. Um, I just want to let you know, it's going to be overnight work. That's when the sewer flows are less. So it's, it's more, it's, it's easier to actually do the work. Plus the traffic is less and, and, you know, Barlow's is off. So I hope that's okay with everybody. But, you know, we, we need to get it done and it'll be done, you know, Monday night. Uh, we, we asked, I did ask Tyler to table that resolution earlier just because we want to get more quotes on the restoration work. Uh, last Friday, I did have a discussion with that Marlow and Jeff Hatcher. We were able to open up their driveway. So that's not much of an urgent need anymore. Uh, and this way it allows us to give us more time to get more quotes from different contractors to do the restoration work. Not go through another contractor, pay market cost. So we were thinking it's going to save us money and not lose any time to, to get that work done. So we should have, hopefully have something, you know, by the next work session, uh, for asking for authorization for the restoration work that will follow. Um, Conroe Road, uh, notified the paper today. We're receiving bids mid-May. Looking to award that June 1st public meeting, uh, with construction work starting probably the Monday after July 4th, uh, which is after schools, especially for Conroe. We thought it would be best for that. So that's moving along. Uh, same thing with Stewart Ave, that drainage repair, uh, that's going to be advertised tomorrow and also be receiving bids mid-May. So that those, those two projects should get done, um, June and then Conroe July and August, should about 60 days. Um, there'll be more, we'll be advertising soon over the next month or two. I'll, you know, keep you updated on that with the traffic coming improvements, the, uh, the road program. I have a conference call with PCG and New Jersey American Water on Friday afternoon, just to go over the schedule. Uh, New Jersey American Water has been getting a lot of their mains done. They're on the services now. So once they do that, it would just be a waiting game to let things settle out there. And then, um, PCG, you know, just like water and our contractor will be hitting that whole area in Ward One. Um, you know, with, uh, paving improvements, most likely about September, October, uh, that work will get done. And New Jersey American Water has confirmed they are going to be doing the water main along Notre Dame. So, and they will be sharing in the cost for, you know, resurfacing that would, they would all otherwise have to be done anyway. Um, the, uh, the River Trail that Burlington County is doing, they just started work. They started clearing, grading. They have a notice received, so they're not going to be stopping until the trail is done, which should be sometime in September, October. They'll be out of Delran though pretty quickly, uh, after about a month or so. Um, one thing I want to bring up, Simon and Schuster has asked for a bond release. We talked about this at a council meeting, I think in the last fall, and we just never went back to it. We tabled the matter. They posted a bond about five years ago with, as part of their, uh, warehouse expansion site plan approval. The bond was required by the zoning board because there was a question on whether or not they needed to add additional on, on site parking because they needed a parking variance. Um, and the way that everybody's familiar with it, everybody parks down at the corner of, uh, Front and Brown. And the thought was, even if they did provide additional parking in the corner by Third and Brown, nobody would park there anyway. Um, so the board allowed them to, uh, green bank the parking and post a bond. So after five years, the township was flooded with complaints about parking issues still. The township can call on that bond and force them to install a parking lot. Um, so that they had, the Simon Schuster reps have been asking for their bond back. Uh, we discussed last time I met Jeff. Spoke with the chief, uh, and I think everybody's agreed that there hasn't been any really issues with the parking. Nothing more than really could be tied to Simon and Schuster more. If anything, it was just residents parking along, uh, the river line or, and/or people asking for permits or permit, uh, permit, uh, signs, something like that. So, um, unless any of the council has any concerns, uh, we would ask that, you know, be a resolution, uh, on at the, I guess, the next meeting, uh, releasing the bond.
All right. Yeah, I, I think we talked about it probably a year ago. Uh, I, I do remember talking and I think Virginia, did, I think you had a, either you or Ken, uh, had, had an issue with releasing the bond. I'm not trying to put you on the hot seat here, but are, are you? Have, have you heard any complaints from your residents and your word about it?
Not a one. There's a lot on that area, but they choose to park in certain areas. Do you know what I mean? There's so much parking on these. So if people are willing to walk a little bit, there's parking there.
Great. Okay.
Yeah, I know, uh, back when we, uh, approved the application, um, they even agreed and I, uh, Jim, you can, uh, can, uh, confirm. All along the street out front, they have, uh, was it New Jersey there? They improved the parking. Instead of people parking vertically into the grass, they created parking spaces and they've actually, and it looks like they've enforced it or promoted it anyway. So, yeah, I wouldn't have any problem because I think the parking they added when they did the renovation was more than enough to cover, uh, their employees.
Yeah, that, that's correct. They, they did some, a lot of striping. They not only did this, they did some repaving out there for us. They also did a lot of restriping or added striping to organize the parking better. So people, it wasn't a free for all. These was a little organized and acceptable spots. So they did do that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I have no problem releasing it if, if, especially Virginia. Okay. Yeah, I, I have no problem releasing it if, if, especially Virginia, if you're not having any issues from your folks and the chief isn't. You know, I know I took a tour of Simon and Schuster once. They have, everything's pretty straight and narrow there, so it doesn't surprise me that they've got their folks in line and using the right parking spots. I know there was issues before, but I, I have no issues counsel. Do we, are we okay releasing that?
Well, there, there'll be, you'll need a resolution. So we'll just have Jamie and I will work together, have a resolution on for you at the next meeting. You can only release a bond by resolution.
Okay.
I believe.
Jim, I just, sorry, if you want to finish your report, I have a question.
Uh, I think that was it.
Okay, cool. My, my only question was, I'm glad we're getting that pipe fixed in front of Barlow. Is there at night, is there going to be, I don't think there's many residents around there or we're not concerned about noise during this, this renovation or a repair in the middle of the night?
I mean, the closest residence would be down Fairview Boulevard on the opposite side of the Barlow. And then the, the nature of the work activity, there's no jackhammering, there's no heavy equipment. I would imagine the Route 30 traffic itself would be louder than what these guys are doing. There may be some backup noises from the, you know, somebody back goes or something to backup beeping. But, um, you know, I, I just considering the situation and the, the flows in the sewer, you know, there's a little risk to, I guess, I guess noise impacts, but more of a reward with safety and just getting the job done right.
Yeah, absolutely. I was just going to say if there was a concern about noise, we would just notify residents, but if, if you think that it's, it's not really a concern, you know, the cars are louder, then I think we're, we're good to go and we're glad to see it get done. We want that done as soon as possible.
Yes. Okay.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Any questions for Jim while we have him from council? All good. Awesome. All right. And now at this time we have reports from council. So first up we have Councilwoman Virginia Parejo live from Amaco Island, maybe. Virginia, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Saturday, April 24th is DEA National Drug Take Back Day. From 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, you can drop off unused or expired medications at the Delran Police Station. Also, the Delran team will be collecting on behalf of second chance toys, which donates toys back to children and keeps unnecessary plastics out of the landfills. They will have a bin at the municipal building in the same location. You would drop your junk items on the same dates as our cleanup days. Thursday, April 15th and Friday, April 16th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And Saturday, April 17th from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That is all I have for tonight and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next up, we have report from Councilman Smith.
Thank you very much. First item I can report, and I'm very proud to announce that I have gotten my second little bit 19 vaccine. So I guess in about 11 more days, I'll be fully vaccinated and completely, you know, safe from getting the virus. So, uh, you know, it's painless, you know, not, not a big deal. Did have some mild, you know, side effects, got a little sore, but I got up on Monday morning and felt like myself. So I would encourage any and all residents, you know, maybe on the fence to definitely go ahead and sign up for the vaccine. Second thing is, uh, you know, as of yesterday, FEMA has opened up, you know, for folks that have had someone that's passed from COVID. They will offer some assistance with burial costs. So any residents that have, you know, know of people that have lost someone to COVID, I would definitely encourage them to go to FEMA.gov to find out how to apply for those funds. And last, last is that normally this time of year would be our tax day. But we've gotten a little bit of a reprieve this year. So folks that, uh, have not completed their 2020 taxes, you have until May 17th to complete your taxes. Don't wait to the last minute. But they take advantage of these extra 30 days that you have in order to get your taxes done if you have not done so already. And with that, that completes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Next up, we have Councilman Lynn Jenny. Jenny?
The only thing I'd like to comment is a congratulations on Chief Al Parente on his retirement. It was wonderful to join the mayor and every council person was present along with, of course, all the police officers and firemen with their vehicles, all the lights flashing. I know he's a modest man, but he can't help but have really enjoyed and appreciated the showing and, and the true caring that people showed him, I think. And, you know, it just helps Delran. It just helps solidify that Delran really feels like a small community. That's all I have.
Thanks, Councilman Wilson. And next up, we have our vice president of council, Vice President Lyon.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I also was honored to be part of the chief's retirement. That was a nice, nice event. Good to see all the officers out there and the affection for the chief and whatnot. So that, I was honored to be a part of that. The second thing I'd like to bring up is I was part of a committee on the planning board committee with the mayor and some other folks. Cause we redid the master plan and now that the law in New Jersey for the cannabis use and whatnot. So I believe, and feel free to jump in mayor if you need to. I think we have to just to put it on the council's radar, we have to do a resolution to, you know, get in line with everything as this comes forward. Because this is actually going to start moving later this summer and into the fall. And there are folks that want to possibly come in to our community in certainty, whether it's retail, manufacturing or whatnot. And we, when they redid the master plan, they had the foresight to make it, put it in there and it's vague enough that we can have them in certain areas. And, and we can dictate through the resolution how, you know, if it's manufacturing, it could be in one area. If it's retail, it could be in, in a multiple areas. So I just wanted to put that on the radar in the council.
Yeah. And, and Mr. Vice President, I think I, I did speak to Sal after you guys, and not Sal, I'm sorry. Actually, I did speak to Sal, but I also spoke to Stuart, the, the solicitor attorney for the planning board. My understanding was the recommendations have to go back to you guys because he recommended that you determine what use you want in each zone. So I think you have to still do that, or did you do that? I, I'm not sure exactly where we're at in the process, but Stu wants you to say like, perhaps you're going to allow growing in agricultural use, but you're not going to allow distribution, you know, he's based on my understanding from Stuart, that was his recommendation.
If I can, if I can jump in, Tom. When did you talk to Stuart? We met last night. Wasn't it last night, Tom? Yes, it was last night.
Oh, and this was after your first meeting.
Okay. So we talked about all that. I spoke with the Jamie today and Kathy Phillips, the, uh, the planning board secretary. So we're working on that and, and, and just, just crossing some Ts and dotting some Is. I'm sure we'll throw it to the, to the full board at our next meeting, send it over to you all. And I'm assuming that Sal or Stuart, probably Sal, will draft an ordinance. And, uh, where, where some recommendation of, you know, possible ordinance and you all will can act on that. There's one other thing that, that we're working out some of the kinks, but all in all, you know, the overarching issue was in that it was kind of vague. So we weren't sure if that was enough. That's why we had to do this. Turns out it's enough. And it really leaves the option in council's hands more than anything for the exact where it kind of says it can be any, you know, this can be here or here, and that can be here. And that gives you the op, the opportunity to pick and choose as you want.
Great.
Jump in to clarify?
Sure, go ahead.
So, yeah, so the, so the recommendations will come from the planning board. So once we have that report, we have until August 21st to pass an ordinance. So, so council will have to pass an ordinance. We've not discussed it because it doesn't appear to be the desire of council at all, but there, there is under the state statute, if council does not want this type of business at all in Delran, you do have the option also until August 21st to say, no, we don't want this in our community. That doesn't appear to be the discussion, but just so everyone is aware, you do have that option under state law. And then as Tom had alluded to, there, there are six different classes of cannabis business from growing to retail to micro and they're, and they're all defined. So once we have those recommendations, each municipality can do up to 2% of a local tax. So once we identify the areas consistent with the master plan where these different types of businesses can go, for example, there might be a spot in the industrial park that's ideally suited for growth. There may be a retail spot ideally suited somewhere along Route 130. Once we identify those, then we can, I put, reference those zones. We've had some conversations with some potential businesses already as to where they would be located. We'll pass that by August 21st, which will be upon us, you know, very, very soon. And then we're, we're, we are open for business. It's, it's a little bit of the Wild West. The Cannabis Control Commission, I believe, which was, uh, named in the statute, had their first meeting or public comments yesterday. So it's, it's not understating it to say the rules are being written as we sit here. So, uh, so this is brand new. There may be challenges, there may be revisions. But I, at, at least so far, the definitive guidance that we can give is we do have that date of August 21st to adopt and we're on track for that.
Great. And, and we will, and I think, Tom, I think you hit the nail on the head. We want to, we don't want to drag this out any more than it has to be. So the minute we can move forward with that, we, we will definitely do that.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to make sure it's on the radar because that, that date's going to sneak up, you know, faster than we know. And, and when do the ordinance, obviously it's going to be a little bit. So wanted to put that on everybody's radar. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Vice President. Appreciate it. For my report, very, very, very brief, I want to, once again, thank the communications committee for their thoughtful insight and dedication over the last couple of months to really help move the township in what I think is the right direction and any of us, all of us here agree. So I just want to thank them for, for all their help. It was all volunteers. Couldn't have been done without them. And finally, I want to thank Joe Parento, the former chair of the RAC. Joe has resigned from the RAC. Was just, just to step back and kind of take a break from some of his commitments. The man does more than anyone I know. And hopefully can sleep a little bit more at night instead of two hours that he normally gets. He's a fire commissioner, has about six other jobs in the RAC. So he's just trying to take a step back. So I want to thank Joe. I, I don't know how long he's been involved, but he's been on it for as long as I have. And that's, I think, almost six years and plenty of time, plenty of years before that. So I want to thank him because it's often a thankless job. I've been in, in the table with him and it's, it's a lot of hours behind the scenes. People don't realize. So I want to thank Joe and his wife also, who was, who also resigned, who was with him also helping out. But in some other good news, the RAC elected from its body Colin Rafferty is the new chair. So I want to congratulate Colin and wish him the best of luck as the RAC continues to do what we do and hopefully can have some events in this post pandemic world. So with that, we will now open the floor to public comment. I'll ask for a motion to do that. Lynn, and take it a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We are now open for public comment. For folks who are joining us on Zoom, if you could please raise your hand. There's a raise your hand feature at the bottom of the application. At that point, Jamie will allow you to speak. So if you could just raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I'll ask for a motion to close the floor.
Motion, Tom Lyon.
And second, please. Is that Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries, the floor is closed. And at this time, I'll need a motion to approve resolution 2021-73. That's authorizing executive session to discuss, one, personnel matters, two, contract negotiations with the lieutenants, and three, contract negotiations with CWA. Virginia and a second? Okay, Jamie, do you mind calling the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny? Ms. Parejo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon? Mr. Burrell?
Aye. And the resolution carries. We are now going into executive session. We'll be back in short order to take any action, any action will be taken in this meeting. So we'll be back shortly.
Let's say goodnight, everybody. I don't think.
Take care.
Goodnight, everybody.
We'll see everybody in the closed session. Everybody's here but Sal. You think he's in attendees? Jennifer, you got to get Sal a little bit.
He's there. He's in attendees.
I just promoted him. He should be joining in a second.
You beat into the punch, Jen, every time.
I just have it saved in my tasks.
All right, I, we, we can move, move on here. So there's no action to be taken. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Tom Lyon.
And Virginia? Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? No, nobody, the motion carries. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a good rest of your night.
Be well, everyone. Goodnight.